Good evening. Good evening, this is the call order for the City of Canal Winchester Planning and Zoning Meeting for Monday, August 11th, 2025. Mr. Deeds, roll call please.
Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Ms. Gooden.
Here.
Ms. McDonald.
Here.
Mr. Posgrove.
Here.
Mr. Woldenthaler.
Here.
Mr. Ritchie. Motion to excuse Mr. Ritchie.
Second.
Motion made by, uh, to excuse Mr. Ritchie, motion made by Mr. Deeds, second by Mr. Woldenthaler, roll call please.
Mr. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Gooden.
Yes.
Ms. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Posgrove.
Yes.
Mr. Woldenthaler?
Yes.
And Mr. Deeds, yes.
All right, time in seven o'clock PM. Uh, now I'll need approval minutes from our July 2025 meeting, please.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Posgrove, second by Ms. Gooden, any further discussion on the minutes from last month? Roll call please.
Mr. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Gooden.
Yes.
Ms. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Posgrove.
Yes.
Mr. Woldenthaler.
Yes.
Mr. Deeds abstained since I was not here.
Uh, now it'll be time for public comment for items that are not on our agenda this evening, so if there's anybody here that's from the public wishes to speak. Okay, if you'll be speaking with us this evening, if there's any chance you'll talk to us, could you please stand if you're able and take an oath? Do you swear to be truthful in the testimony you give and tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth? If so, please say I do. Thank you, I'll turn it over to staff, Mr. Moore, for our first application this evening.
The first application on tonight's agenda is variance VA-25-004. Uh, the address to subject property is 8150 and 8200 Dally Road. Uh, the request this evening is a variance for Chapter 1175.02E3H to allow for more than one wall sign and to exceed the maximum 125 square footage for total wall signage. Um, these variance applications I want to go over are all related to the, um, project for Kroger's on Dally Road. Uh, the variance applications will come first and then we'll do the final development plan for the full project. Uh, that way the decisions for the variances can be taken into account during that full final plan as all of these applications are relevant to the final development plans approval. Uh, this, um, subject property is approximately, uh, 14.2 acres out of the overall 17.9 acres in the Green Gate Plaza Development. Uh, the Green Gate Plaza Development was approved, um, for reference by City Council on July 7th, uh, with ordinance 25-015. Uh, this, um, property, uh, that's being requested here is the largest outlot, the 14.2 acres in the center, uh, is being proposed for a Kroger Marketplace store at 122, 910 square feet. And then the detached fuel center, um, has a 5,400 square foot canopy and 178 square foot, uh, kiosk, um, underneath the canopy. Uh, the, um, general site plan, uh, that will be, um, discussed in detail with the final development plans up on the screen, um, for frame of reference, on the, the bottom side of the screen here is Dally Road. Um, on the left-hand side of your screen is the Green Gate Boulevard that will be constructed by the City of Canal Winchester, uh, yet this year. Uh, the Kroger site, uh, the 14.2 acres is the largest outlot here centered on the property. And then the fuel center, um, is located in this corner, um, closest to Dove Parkway and Dally Road intersection. Uh, the Kroger store, um, itself is showing to have four wall signs. Uh, those four wall signs are broken up across the building elevation. Uh, the central large, uh, wall sign here, A, is located over the main entry. Uh, second set of wall signs here, B, is located on the northwest corner, uh, that is advertising for some additional services that the store provides, also is providing some orientation to the, um, side of the building which the services are being provided. On the north side of the building here, uh, you have the, um, signage over the pickup, um, door on, on the, um, northeast corner, and then on the, uh, northwest corner on the canopy for, uh, the pharmacy drive-through is identification for that as well. Um, the total wall signage for the Kroger Marketplace is 417.35 square feet, um, which exceeds one sign per business at a max 125 square feet. Uh, when looking at the fuel center, uh, they are proposing a total of six wall signs. Uh, the six wall signs, uh, are comprised of the word Kroger on each side of the fuel canopy. Uh, the, um, additional signage on the kiosk, um, would be the two, um, shopping cart logos on the front and the back. Um, out of this calculation is not including the LED fuel price signs, that is a separate variance that will be discussed next. Um, when looking at all six of these wall signs, their total at 67.6 square feet. Um, it is worth mentioning that, um, the elevations facing the, um, south and facing the east, which are directly adjacent to the residential, um, apartment complex, those wall signs are shown to be non-illuminated, while the other signage on the canopy facing, uh, Dally Road and internal to the Kroger site is shown to be illuminated, uh, the signage on the kiosk is non-illuminated. Um, when staff reviewed the, um, variance criteria for approval, um, staff has noted that the, um, Kroger Marketplace facility, sizable at 122,910 square feet, uh, this building does sit in excess of 370 feet off of Dally Road and 250 feet off Green Gate Boulevard. Uh, with the large size of the building and the increase in setbacks, the scale of the signage and number of signage is appropriate for the building. Uh, the applicant has carefully identified signage on the building to orient all the multiple uses that are being provided, as well as, um, carefully positioning signage on the fuel, uh, canopy and kiosk to be, uh, context sensitive to the adjacent residential properties. Uh, when looking at the, and literal interpretation of the code, uh, the signage for the site, um, staff does not believe would be appropriate at the scale in the Violet Point Overlay District. Um, similar variances were granted for the Meyer store just south of this property, again to clearly identify the building, its entrances, and the different uses within the facility. Uh, the applicant, um, is requesting fair consideration to clearly identify the proposed use given its setback in scale from the road and clearly identify all of its pertinent site features and wayfinding. Uh, granting this site variance will allow the site to have the same privilege as the adjacent Meyer store to the south, and granting this variance will enhance the public, uh, wayfinding around the site and safety and, and convenience provided the multiple building active zones that are generated towards different site activities. Uh, so with the, um, request, staff is recommending VA-25-004 for the increased number of wall signs and the, um, number of wall signs, um, by size for the Kroger Marketplace and Fuel Center be approved as presented.
Any questions for staff? So, do you want to run through all these or do we want to just kind of go through each one, Mr. Moore? Do you give the applicant a chance to speak to each application or do we want to kind of go through all these at once?
Let's do, um, one application at a time.
Okay.
That way we can kind of stay focused on what we're discussing and then the motions for review.
Okay, so any comments or questions for staff? Okay, anything the applicant wishes to add?
Hi. Andrew Gardner with V3 Companies, we're the civil engineers for the Kroger company. Um, I do have with me, um, representatives from Kroger, um, our representatives from our architect, Moody Nolan, um, as well to answer your questions tonight. Um, with this variance, I really don't have anything to add. Um, I do know there's a comment in one of the staff, it may not be in this variance, about the Starbucks sign not being in compliance. Um, we've revised that, I sent Andrew a new sign on that today that was, um, you know, I think in compliance with the type of signs that are permitted, so I just wanted to mention that. Um, condition is, is no longer an issue for us. I'm happy to answer any questions I can on the signage. Shoot.
Any questions for the applicant?
And just for frame of reference, I did not include the Starbucks sign on this application as that's a separate tenant in the building, so that's covered during the final development plan.
I see, yeah, thank you. All right, so, St. and C's are all variances, there's public hearings attached to them, so I'll open it up for public comment. Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Deeds, second by Ms. Gooden, roll call please.
Mr. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Gooden.
Yes.
Ms. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Posgrove.
Yes.
Mr. Woldenthaler.
Yes.
Mr. Deeds, yes.
All right, we have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, uh, grant variance application VA-25-004.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Gooden, second by Mr. Posgrove, roll call please.
Mr. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Gooden.
Yes.
Ms. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Posgrove.
Yes.
Mr. Woldenthaler.
Yes.
Mr. Deeds, yes.
All right, so VA-25-004 has been approved. Uh, I'll turn it over to Mr. Moore for this second application.
Uh, the next application for the Kroger store, um, is a variance VA-25-005. Uh, this variance is from Chapter 1175.02E3F to allow for digital LED fuel price signs on the fuel canopy. Uh, again, the fuel canopy is located here in the southwest quadrant of the proposed out parcel. Um, the, um, canopy itself, uh, features three LED fuel pricer signs, um, one to the north, one to the, um, south, uh, one to the, um, one to the east. North, thank you, northwest and east. Uh, the, um, applicant has, um, designed these signs to be as least impactful to the residential neighborhood that surrounds it as possible, um, given that the sign located on the east is located furthest away from the residential buildings and is mainly centered to face the main entry to the Kroger, uh, store. Um, this variance is derived from our Violet Point Overlay District that restricts, um, digital message board and LED signs, uh, within the overlay itself. Uh, the, um, applicant is showing each one of these signs is a, um, total of 30.3 square feet. Uh, when looking at the criteria for approval, um, special circumstances and conditions found staff, staff has found to exist as this property is, uh, required a unique 75-foot landscape buffer off of Dally Road. Uh, this provision pushes the Fuel Center further away from Dally Road, therefore resulting in any canopy mounted signage to be further away from Dally Road. Uh, the literal interpretation of the code, um, was intended to prohibit LED message board signs from being installed within the overlay district. Um, since the code is written, um, the Fuel Center LED signage has been, um, grasped by almost every fuel user out there, um, and is a variance that Planning and Zoning Commission used to see all the time until our, um, signage code was updated in 2017 to permit these LED fuel price signs, um, under certain conditions. Um, this Violet Point Overlay District does not follow our general Chapter 1189 for signage, um, so the restriction still exists. Um, updating the Violet Point Overlay District would require both Canal Winchester and Violet Township to create a new overlay set of standards that we both share, uh, making any updates to that document a little more difficult. Um, the site, um, has special conditions and circumstances, again, from the increased setbacks that were required in the 2001 zoning code, and that granting this variance, uh, will allow the Fuel Center to display price effectively at the same caliber as other fuel centers located, um, immediately to the north with Sheets in Violet Township, uh, excuse me, City of Pickerton, and to the south with Meyer along, uh, the Dally Road corridor. Uh, granting this variance, um, staff has noted should be carefully determined by the Planning and Zoning Commission as to not adversely affect the public health, safety, convenience, comfort, and prosperity. Again, the, um, signage code for the city in Chapter 1189 has been updated, um, to allow for fuel price signs to be LED with some conditions, that those signs must have a limit of three tenths foot candle brightness greater than ambient light level, and then also the signs have to have automatic dimming capabilities to maintain that three tenth foot candle, um, brightness. Uh, with this, um, condition being found in our code, uh, staff is recommending VA-25-005 for the three LED fuel price signs on the Fuel Center canopy be approved with the two following conditions, that the maximum luminance produced by the signs shall not exceed three tenths foot candles greater than the ambient light level, and that automatic dimming capability shall adjust the sign's illumination to the ambient light level at all times of the day or night.
Questions for staff?
This is, I believe I heard same as Meyer, correct? And Sheets?
So Sheets is in Pickerton?
Pickerton.
They have an LED, uh, fuel pricer sign. Um, Meyer, which is, um, in the city limits, was granted a variance for the fuel pricer signs prior to our code to allow it, uh, came to be.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Anything the applicant wishes to add on this one?
No comments, other than we agree with staff's conditions.
Okay, that was my question. Anything else for the applicant on this one?
No.
All right, it's a variance, I'll open it up for public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McDonald, second by Mr. Deeds, roll call.
Mr. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Gooden.
Yes.
Ms. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Posgrove.
Yes.
Mr. Woldenthaler.
Yes.
Mr. Deeds, yes.
Uh, we need a motion.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve variance VA-25-005 with the staff recommendations, um, max, regarding maximum illumination not exceeding three tenths foot candles and automatic dimming capability.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Deeds, second by Mr. Woldenthaler, any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Gooden.
Yes.
Ms. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Posgrove.
Yes.
Mr. Woldenthaler.
Yes.
Mr. Deeds, yes.
All right, so variance VA-25-005 has been approved.
Uh, the next variance application VA-25-006 is a variance from Chapter 1175.02E3J to allow for the ground signs to exceed the maximum size and height. Uh, the Kroger facility is showing, uh, two monument signs to be installed. The first monument sign is a commercial development identification sign at the corner of Green Gate Boulevard and Dally Road, um, located here on your screen. Uh, this sign is required as part of the 2001 zoning approvals for the property. Um, the sign to have a commercial development identification sign. Um, this sign, um, is shown to be, um, 7.4 feet tall and has 50 square feet of signage per face. Uh, the second sign, um, which is identical in design, is located next to the right-in, right-out, uh, for the Kroger center, uh, centered on the property. Uh, this sign, again, um, has the same 7.4 foot tall with 50 square foot of signage per face. Um, when looking at both signs, they're both shown to have similar design with the CMU block base and feature internal illumination. Uh, when looking at, um, Chapter 1175 for the overlay district, it notes that the maximum height for any monument sign is six feet tall, and the maximum area for signage is, uh, 30 square feet, uh, so it is an increase in both height and, uh, size per sign face. Uh, when looking at the, um, criteria for zoning approval, um, staff has noted that special circumstances and conditions do exist. Uh, this site is a 14-acre, uh, parcel, uh, the Kroger store is set, uh, setback greater than all the other out parcels in the same Green Gate Plaza development. Uh, the site for the Kroger, the size of the Kroger sign will be in scale with the building, and the other smaller outlots, um, will have scaled-down signage, uh, in proportion to their lot sizes. Um, the literal interpretation of the code is to limit the scale of freestanding signs to decrease the visual clutter for the community. Uh, this Kroger site plan, um, is on the largest site in Green Gate Plaza Development, and again, features the largest setbacks for any building in the plaza. Uh, with special circumstances and conditions, they do, uh, happen to be in this case a direct result from actions of the applicant. Um, the Kroger store has been actively and openly creating this preliminary plan, uh, they chose to place Kroger further back on the property, um, and, and this site plan also has forced the other outlots to be closer to Dally Road to surround this store. Uh, granting of this variance will not confer any undue privilege when looking at the adjacent Meyer development to the south. Uh, the Meyer site has a much larger sign than, um, Kroger site. Uh, the Meyer sign, for all intents and purposes, was, was originally designed to advertise for Meyer, and then four outlots, uh, facing Dally, and then four outlots facing King's Crossing. Um, since that sign has gone on and the outlots in front of Meyer have been, um, underperforming in terms of development out there, that multi-tenant sign has been advertising for other facilities inside of Meyer, so it has taken on a different kind of function than what was originally intended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, the request this evening is for a single tenant sign for just Kroger, uh, so no multi-tenant, um, display purposes. Uh, this does line up with the, um, approvals for the preliminary development plan that the applicant shared, uh, showing that there would be no, um, community sign for all the out parcels, that each out parcel will have their own signage. Uh, when looking at this, um, variance for adversing any public health, safety, convenience, comfort, prosperity, and general welfare, uh, staff has noted that the Planning and Zoning Commission, um, should be careful in determining this variance approval to not adversely affect those functions. Um, staff is recommending that the base of the sign be modified from the, um, eight-by-16 CMU block that is shown in the renderings to an architectural CMU that is a four-by-16 inch block, uh, to match criteria number three in the, uh, zoning, um, ordinance for the overlay district, which states all monument signs shall have a base consistent with the primary building material. Uh, the building material that's shown at the base of the sign does not match the scale of any of the building material on the proposed Kroger Marketplace store. Um, additionally, the applicant's design, um, does have an opaque face with, um, a, a overlay for the, um, lettering to shine through. Um, staff is re, further recommending that the sign have push-through acrylic lettering to clearly identify the sign as not being a cabinet box sign, so providing that dimensionality to those letters, um, changes its category from, from one signage type to another. Uh, so staff is recommending that VA-25-006, uh, for the two monument signs be approved with the two conditions, uh, the sign base be utilized, uh, with the primary masonry type, Lee Brick and Block Sedgfield Blend, uh, that is used, um, on the Kroger store with the architectural CMU in the size of four by 16, and that the sign features, uh, push-through acrylic, acrylic lettering to create a dimensional sign face.
Thank you, any questions for staff?
For the, for the outlots, you said they'll have their own signage, will they be monument type?
So the, um, Violet Point Overlay District does allow for monument signs for all the properties. Um, the same overlay district has the, the same restriction as the first variance you guys reviewed tonight for one wall sign per building, so I would anticipate as outlots get developed, they will be coming through with similar variances to increase the number of wall signs, but the ground sign is permitted, um, based on the overlay district for every outlot.
Because the, the one that would be there on Dove Parkway, you know, there's not a whole lot around it, seems to be okay, though on the side on Green Gate we find, but the corner of Green Gate and Dally, if, that M2 sign's right next to it, I mean, it's gonna be, good, looks like it may be awkward location.
And that's a very good comment, uh, Mr. Deeds. Um, I had a similar discussion with Ms. McDonald prior to this meeting about the location of the plaza sign. Um, I'm sure that's something the applicant is willing to discuss, um, with you all this evening.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for staff? Anything the applicant wishes to add, or if you want to address that?
Uh, well, we certainly, um, uh, agree with, um, staff's, uh, conditions, in fact, I thought we'd already changed that, so I apologize that that didn't get through on the resumme, but we do agree with those conditions for the monument sign. Um, regarding the, um, the Green Gate sign, I mean, we'll, I pretty much put that anywhere you want. Um, I think in our initial preliminary development plan discussions with staff, you know, that's kind of where we settled on where it would be located, but, um, you know, we can certainly think through where, if maybe there's a better location for that and work with staff on that. Um, we're not married to having it at that corner, it just seemed like it's where it made the most sense, um, in relation to Green Gate. Um, you know, I, I think it muddies some of the zoning and, and things like that, but we even, at one point, I think, discussed, you know, Green Gate Plaza, Kroger underneath on one sign, um, but I know that violates the condition of, of the original zoning, which is why we have the two signs, so I think we, we're happy to work with staff on that and come up with a, with a scenario for these monument signs that works and, and doesn't impede the, the out parcels, um, in any way.
I, I will say just, initial guess, I don't know what, um, other conversation, but I'd say on the other side of the drive, or maybe push them a little bit apart, or maybe even flip it on the other side of Green Gate, but I don't know, is there, do we have apartments signing on that corner? I don't think they come in with their, right, because those are out parcels.
Say that again, Mr. Deeds.
If we flip them on the other side of, uh, Green Gate.
I know there's gonna be another commercial out parcel on that, over there, based on the plans I've seen.
Yeah, so the, so the, the north side of Green Gate Boulevard is not a part of Green Gate Plaza, that would be its own, um...
Okay.
...site.
How many potential outlots are there?
Three.
Three?
Yeah, the, um, this plan is showing three outlots on it. Um, I've had, had conversations with the property owner to possibly divide the outlaw at the corner of Green Gate and Dally into two, um, outlots, so what you're seeing here for, for breakdown with outlots is really preliminary. But I would say the amount, the number of outlots that would have, you know, immediate corner frontage would be one, whether or not the, this 1.3 acre outlot here gets split, you know, this way to provide one and two. Um, I know that's something they've asked me about to, um, to do, but, um, I would really just follow for, for any consideration, you know, Kroger's property boundary for, you know, knowing where their property starts and stops.
Sure.
So, help me understand why we have a, wait, we need this monument sign that says Green Gate Plaza when it's effectively one business?
So when this property was originally zoned in 2001, it was not, um, this 17.9 acres, it was a 35 acre site, and then with that original zoning for the 35 acre site, the 2001 zoning text required a plaza identification sign. Um, so this 35 acres has since been reduced to 17.9 acres, which still follows the 2001 text to require a plaza identification sign. In the 2001 code, the anticipated growth for this property is drastically different, in my opinion, than what is being proposed. Um, my assumption is in 2001, it was anticipated this property was going to be like a shopping mall, or something much different, um, given the signage in 2001 was never asked to be modified for the ordinance that approved this zoning. Um, so with the change to be basically a big box with outlots around it, um, it becomes more or less a challenge where to place this sign than what was originally intended, um, but that condition in the zoning was not waived when council approved this updated preliminary plan, so the signage has to go in to identify the plaza somewhere.
Would, would we be able to waive that requirement through a variance of saying, no, you don't have to do that sign?
I don't think so, because it's, it specifically says in the development text it's required. It doesn't say shall, or, you know, there will be.
Doesn't say may.
It says, yeah, it says required.
Okay.
Can they be combined?
So that was something staff had talked to the applicant about. Um, they were trying to come up with a concept to have a larger sign that identified for the plaza Kroger, and I'm assuming, you know, tenant slots for the out parcels as well. Um, again, the preliminary plan did not anticipate that type of sign that was going to be put on the property. Um, when council was reviewing the, um, plans for the preliminary approval, our law director noted that the Violet Point Overlay District standards apply to this property, and the overlay district standards do not allow for multi-tenant signage across multiple properties. Um, the 2001 zoning code kind of, sort of did, but again, it was more intended for shopping malls, because if you had a plaza sign, you weren't allowed... malls, because if you had a Plaza sign, you weren't allowed to have wall signs. I don't know how you do that without it being an interior shopping mall type scenario. So with that direction, staff had led the applicant to produce an architectural sign that would be kind of developed into the landscaping to identify the plaza. Rick, I don't know if you were on council when Winchester Circle was approved in 2008 for this property. That development was the whole 35 acres. What they did for the Plaza identification sign is they had some like 45-degree triangle-shaped Corten steel that was going to be built into this landscape mound that was required that said Green Gate Plaza, or it said, didn't say Green Gate Plaza, it said Winchester Circle. So that's how they kind of architecturally married it into the required landscape buffer. You know, that's how that was done then. This applicant has chosen to do a kind of freestanding sign to match their brand design for Kroger. But just to give you some parameters on how other entities have applied that standard in the past.
So another idea that I would run by you is, instead of having the sign equal to the signage of Kroger, would it make more sense to have a lower profile so it's gonna match the profile of whatever tenant might go in there?
It could. I made it very well, could. That is a discussion, you know, you guys could have with the applicant on terms of appropriateness of scale and height and location.
All right. Thank you.
I'd say, yeah, that is the other option, flip it on the other side of the empty way.
But then you're gonna run into the same problem over there, because that five acre is gonna be developed.
This is a, this is a different.
Yeah, I just move the whole thing over. Yeah, competing with the corner.
You mean this corner, Mr. Deeds?
Oh, no, no, I meant, maybe just move it over here.
Oh.
So then you're competing with those two signs?
I know, yeah. I mean, I, I think the single sign or, it's probably the.
I mean, if we angled it.
I think a lower scale makes more sense.
And maybe did a lower profile and kind of angled it at the corner, that might, you know, look a little bit better and not, not interrupt the out parcel as much. I think the hard part, too, is, you know, since that out parcel's not determined yet, you know, we're not doing the landscaping in the buffer in front of the out parcel, so it's hard to really incorporate this sign without knowing that. So maybe the answer is to just move it over to the corner of the Kroger property or something for now. I don't know what the appropriate solution would be here.
I don't like that.
It's unfortunately that it's required. It's kind of silly.
Based on some of your comments, Ms. McDonald would, and Mr. Deeds would, just trying to think creatively here for a solution for the applicant this evening. Talk about scale of the sign and position of the sign. If this sign became single-sided, that was parallel with Dylee Road, and then had it be stretched out to where Green Gate Plaza is in one line of text to effectively reduce the height from 7.4 feet to, say, five feet tall, then the sign became twice as long, but still kept the same design. Would that meet, I think, some of the concerns from planning and zoning? And then it could be moved to the other side of the access drive from Kroger's to kind of marry some of your comments? Because there's a landscape buffer here, and it could go directly in front of the landscape mounding and then identify basically the plaza, but in a.
We could incorporate it into the landscape plan.
Lower profile design.
So I think rather than trying to determine where the best placement is, and I would like to see it not be that taller one, just because you're not gonna give the out parcel the ability to make it that big, and it is gonna look kind of strange if you have one that's way taller and one's smaller. But I think that if the variance is for both signs to be that high, the variance potentially could be for the Kroger sign to be that high, and that we work with the applicant when a tenant is determined to figure out what is the best placement and sign height. But that might complicate what you've written here.
The only challenge I would have with that is, the sign is required as part of the project, and we're in a unique scenario here where Kroger is driving the development standards for the entire tract of ground, even though they're only buying one site out of the entire plaza. So from a timing perspective and also pushing the required sign to go in with an outlaw that has an undetermined timeframe to be developed is, I think, creating a hurdle for me. And I would say if there is a recommendation for reducing the, or changing the design of the sign, but the location could be determined, as long as, you know, it'd be setbacks and things like that, then I would be more comfortable going that route rather than not, not knowing where it's gonna go and what it looks like, to have conflicting information when it's required to be approved as part of the final development plan.
If I heard you when you first presented this, that if one of the outlots is sold, they may very well be coming to us for variance for a wall sign. So we don't know necessarily that whoever goes in these outlots is gonna want a monument sign.
Correct.
Correct? No, true, Joe.
I would say that's probably unlikely, but we don't know, because, yeah, there's nothing being presented.
I mean, I don't mind the idea of, honestly, I'm just trying to avoid a problem down the road when we have the out parcel. That's the only I'm looking for. So I don't mind lowering and putting in the landscaping. I don't have a problem with that.
I have no problem with lowering that sign. We can, we can agree to that, lower it. I'll leave it, agree to move it over in front of the Kroger and incorporate it into our landscaping, just so it's not an issue when the out parcel comes back. If that gets us the variance on the Kroger sign, that's really what's important to us.
Is that something, Mr. Gerder, that you can, if this, this body gives you direction on how to get it modified, have the sign vendor prepare that for the council meeting? So it's a part of their plan approval?
Yeah, I think so. I think we can get that done.
That way it's moving, the project's still moving. That way it's understood by all parties when the whole plan gets approved. But I think if there's any direction this board wants to provide to that, I would be more comfortable with that than not knowing where it's going and what it looks like.
So I was gonna ask this during the final development plan, but I'll ask it now. So the Joint Land Use Committee, at what point do they get involved? And if we have to coexist with the persons on that committee through Planning and Zoning City Council Violet Township, is this a discussion that we can have to modify this development text for this particular parcel?
So the CEDA Land Use Committee does not have the ability to modify the development text.
Okay.
They could make a recommendation to the applications that are presented before them, but they don't have the ability to modify any zoning related to this planned district. If they wanted to make like a recommendation to the preliminary plan, they could have, but during the final plan, they're just reviewing what's before them and what meets the overlay document that's in front of you plus what other city codes we have in this case. Typically, CEDA meets prior to this meeting. Last Wednesday it was scheduled. It got canceled because of an illness with one of the board members. We rescheduled to this morning. It got canceled from an illness on another board member. So really great timing on my end. We have it rescheduled to this Thursday, so we will be able to have that CEDA meeting prior to the city council meeting. Unfortunately, just with unforeseen circumstances, not before planning and zoning tonight.
Okay. All right. Any other comments on this application for the applicant? All right. I'll now open it up for public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Gooden, second by Mr. Palsgrove. Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Gooden?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Palsgrove?
Yes.
Yes.
So can I propose something before we make a motion to approve or deny this application? It says here, "V variance from 117502E3J to have a monument sign for Kroger exceed the maximum height." And even though in the, in the description it says there are two monument signs, can we approve just the variance for the Kroger sign, since it says a Kroger sign in the naming of this variance? And allow the other sign, the, the Green Gate sign, to just meet the standards for the district so that it doesn't require a variance at a future time? Can we do that? Does that make sense?
Yes, I think we can, yeah.
So we would approve the variance for the one sign, not approve the variance for the other.
The Plaza sign.
Does that handicap the developer, though, in how big that sign can be, or how long or how tall?
It would set the limit to be a maximum six foot tall and a maximum of 30 square feet per sign face.
I think the square footage is where we get into trouble with that, just because the name.
It's longer.
It's hard to, it's hard to make, to fit that in 30 square feet. The height, I don't really think is an issue if we wanted to hold this under six feet or even less. You know, if we made it a, like, like you mentioned earlier, sort of a longer sign that's not double stacked, it would be a much lower sign, a little bit longer, maybe something parallel of Dove Parkway. But the square footage is where we get into a little bit of a challenge to make that even, it'd be so small, it'd be really kind of pointless, I think, at that point with the lettering.
Right. And I understand what you're saying. I'm just having an issue giving a variance for a seven-foot sign that I don't think is appropriate for that corner.
Agreed.
And I don't know how the rest of the members feel. So I'm trying to figure out how to word this that would be acceptable to the members that doesn't tie Andrew's hands, but is what we've been talking about.
Suggesting, Andrew? Do you have a suggestion on how we should word it?
The way that Deborah described it would require the Plaza sign to be within the parameters of the overlay district.
Right.
If there is any modification to that, say, the issue is purely about height or purely about square footage or, or about it having two faces and not being single-sided. I think in the motion, you could have a condition be based around the Plaza identification sign and modify the parameters for an approval. If you don't want it to meet strictly what the code says, if the issue's, you know, one or the other, or, you know, maybe the variance is from the code section's okay, but the request is too much, I mean, you could reduce, say, it'd be six and a half feet tall instead of seven and a half feet tall, you know, it's still a variance, but it's not as big. That would be a condition. And then if you had any other conditions, such as recommending staff recommendations or anything additional, that would just be a following condition in the motion.
I think, so it's what, the peculiar part is if we squash it, make it longer, it's almost gonna be more square foot.
It'll be.
To what the Kroger sign is.
It'll be more square footage if you make it longer.
Right.
But the height is what you'd be changing.
So if we were to say something like, crap, maximum square feet, like 100 square feet, or 75 square feet for the CEDA's?
So we could do not to exceed six foot in height? We don't have a square footage for that.
Right, because if that's 12, then you're 24.
Somebody out here's gotta have the map.
So that's four foot high at 25 feet.
Mr. Gerder, do you have a sign vendor here tonight?
I do not. Yeah, Darren couldn't make it. I apologize.
So.
And I'm not a sign vendor.
So we've talked about just the pure placement of this sign and then how, you know, it's gotta meet chapter 1175 of the overlay districts. And could we, and I see both sides here, and I don't have an opinion one way or the other, but I would say if we put in there the placement of the monument sign for Green Gate Plaza, you know, and they can, the applicant can work with staff on the placement of that sign from where it's originally set in the renderings here, maybe that kind of solves for, you know, just the space away, we still, they can still meet the square footage, they can still meet the seven, seven-foot variance that we, that they're hoping for us to grant this evening, but just the pure placement's in a different spot, without handcuffing staff or the applicant based on what could happen there in the future.
I just think a seven-foot sign next to one that's only gonna be six foot is gonna look out of place when you drive down.
Yeah.
From a visual perspective. So I think it should at least meet the six foot, not to exceed six foot, but the width of that sign and sign area would be able to accommodate the lettering for Green Gate Plaza.
If I may, I mean, just looking at that, I think we can probably reduce that to six foot even, I mean, the lettering may, may reduce and size some, but I would, I would, again, I'm not the sign vendor, but we're not overly concerned about the height of the Green Gate Plaza sign, so, you know, if, if this board wants us to hold that to six foot, I'll go back to our sign vendor and we'll come up with a sign that's six foot.
One, one item, just for what it's worth for the commission. Something that the Landmarks Commission does when they're looking at signage and trying to modify the scale and design based off of like a site element or building element. If there's a measurement in what the applicant has presented to hold, and then modify like the width or the height to hold one element, the condition could be that the sign cabinet for Green Gate Plaza is, you know, no wider than the 120 inches presented, but the height is reduced to be, you know, maximum six foot in height. That would give the applicant the ability to hold a measurement and scale whatever wording that's necessary to, to hit the text height that's needed. And then if it's, if the conditions know wider than 120, then if they need to go narrower to hit the proportions at whatever they need, you know, it sets a threshold.
Okay.
Given this sign design, you know, there is a big empty space on top of the Plaza that could be shaved. You know, this down here could be shaved, you know, by a third, so you lose two-thirds up here, lose a third here. That may be just enough to get to the six foot without having to change anything else. But just trying to help the commission create verbiage for, for a condition of approval if they need one.
Yeah. All right. We'll need a motion. There'll still be, there'll still be time for discussion on the motion.
You took your notes, so.
So I would make the motion that we approve variance 25-006 with the following conditions. Condition one, as stated in the, in the staff report regarding the block size and the masonry type. Number two is the push-through acrylic lettering. And number three is that the Plaza sign shall not exceed six foot in height, but can be wider than the 100 and, can be not wider than the 120 feet, sign face.
120 inches.
120 inches. Sorry, that's a big, that's a really big sign. I only put one check, so it went feet to me, so for the sign face. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
I can think of that. I'll try.
All right. Any further discussion on that motion and the three conditions noted? All right. Roll call, please. Mr. Donahue? I'm sorry, who seconded that? I didn't.
Correct.
Okay. I figured I helped create the mess. So the motion was made by Ms. McDonald, seconded by Mr. Deeds. Roll call, please. Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Gooden?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Wolden, or I'm sorry, Mr. Palsgrove?
Yes.
Mr. Wolden?
Yes.
And Mr. Deeds?
Who first and seconded, I'm sorry?
Motion made by Ms. McDonald, seconded by Mr. Deeds.
Thank you.
So VA 25006 has been approved with the three conditions noted.
If you could have your sign. If you could have your sign vendor, Mr. Gerder, update that for council, that would be helpful.
I'll do my best.
The next application on tonight's agenda is VA two-five zero zero seven. This request is a variance from chapter eleven eighty-five point oh five A in the two thousand and one zoning code to increase the access drive widths to thirty feet. The site plan prepared for this project shows four access connections to the proposed Kroger site, a full access drive to Dove Parkway, which is a private road to the south, a ride-in, ride-out on Dally Road to the west, and two full access drives to Green Gate Boulevard to the north. Each of the four access drives are shown to be thirty feet wide. Variance has been requested to increase these access drives due to truck routing for the property. Staff has pulled a site plan up on the screen, each access drive in the blue box is facing a public right-of-way. Those are the three that are being requested, the variance four. While there are four access drives, the one facing the private drive does not have any maximum design width in our, in our parking code. When looking at the applicant's plan, just for orientation purposes here, these red lines throughout the site are showing truck routing exhibits prepared by the applicant, just showing the turning movements for the fuel truck and also the large semi-truck that will be delivering to the back of the store to provide some context for the access drive widths. When looking at the special circumstances and conditions, the applicant notes that there are mobile truck routing access points to, to be taken into consideration of the increased access drives. The literal interpretation of the code would cause trucks to have an increased rip, risk of overtopping the curbs and driving through the landscaping throughout the site, that special circumstances and conditions are warranted as the code requirements for access drives. In this case, do not create a safe and protective truck routing for the property, given the size of the vehicles or the user types. That granting of this variance will not confer any undue privilege. This variance is often sought after by industrial and large commercial users that utilize full-size semi-trucks for deliveries, and that granting this variance should be carefully determined by the Planning and Zoning Commission as to not adversely affect the public general welfare for the community. Again, staff has reviewed the proposed truck routing and agrees that the access points at twenty-five feet wide present a potential safety risk. So staff is recommending a VA two-five dash zero zero seven for the increased access drives to be approved as presented.
Any questions for staff? Anything the applicant wishes to add on this one?
No, obviously, you know, it's, it's needed for our truck routing. Twenty-five feet additionally is, is, is really only wide enough for two lanes, so in particular, that access to Green Gate, you know, if you're, if you're leaving the Kroger Center and you're going to make a left on Green Gate, cars are going to back up, but if you have a thirty-foot wide drive, you know, there's, there's enough width there for cars to get by that need to go right and so on. So the additional width kind of helps a lot in a lot of different ways, but the truck routing is our main issue. You know, an additional, you know, we don't know what's going to happen with those out parcels, but there's potential that they need, may need to have a delivery truck as well, which is why we need, we're asking for those additional widths.
My only question would be, maybe this will come up in the develop, final development, but the pavement will be strived appropriately for vehicles that are exiting, you know, left turn, right turn, those sorts of things.
Yeah, I actually meant to update that, but we can, we can fix that.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? All right, I'll open it up for public hearing. Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Deeds, seconded by Mr. Posgrove, rule call, please. Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Gooden?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Posgrove?
Yes.
Mr. Woldenfeller?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds, yes.
Chairman, I recommend that we approve variance application VA twenty-five dash zero zero seven.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Gooden, seconded by Mr. Deeds, rule call, please. Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Gooden?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Posgrove?
Yes.
Mr. Woldenfeller?
Yes.
And Mr. Deeds, yes.
VA twenty-five dash zero zero seven has been approved. The last variance for tonight's application for the Kroger store is VA twenty-five dash zero zero eight. This is a variance from chapter eleven seventy-five point oh two E two C six to increase the parking lot lighting under the fuel canopy to thirty-foot candles. The applicant has produced a photometric plan for the final development plan. In that photometric plan, the applicant is showing under their fuel canopy, they will have seven dual-sided pumps with twenty-four LED fixtures within the canopy to produce a total of ten thousand three hundred and six total lumens. Those, that lumen count is noted in their photometric plan to be dimmed thirty percent. This equates to an average foot candle of, under the fuel canopy at twenty-three point one, and a maximum foot candle under the fuel canopy listed as twenty-seven point nine. Chapter eleven seventy-five of the overlay district notes that all parking lot areas shall have a maximum lighting intensity of twenty-foot candles and an average light intensity between one and three-foot candles across the entire site. When looking at the criteria for approval, staff has noted that special circumstances and conditions do not exist. The applicant is requesting to increase the light levels under the fuel canopy to be brighter than the maximum intensity permitted. Further, the applicant has shown in their submittal, they have the ability to dim the lighting from the maximum brightness with the number of fixtures that they're installing. The literal interpretation of zoning code would not deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by others in the same zoning district. The Illuminating Engineering Society recommends that a minimum of ten-foot candles for fuel pump islands in areas are needed, and that this light level ensures that customers can safely operate fuel dispensers and navigate the area without tripping hazards. Furthermore, in the tenth edition of the IESNA handbook, it's noted that twenty-foot candles for average lighting levels are appropriate for fuel dispensing islands where more than fifty percent of the patrons are between the ages of twenty-five and sixty-five. When looking at special conditions and circumstances, staff did not find any exist for this variance request. The applicant indicated that the basis for granting the conditional use is for the convenience market and fueling center to be granted to provide some relief for the fuel canopy light levels. That granting this variance will confer undue privilege that is denied by the zoning code. The recently approved Friendship Kitchen Fuel Center and the Sheets Convenience Store within the city limits were denied their variance request for an increase in light levels under the fuel canopy, and that granting this variance will adversely affect the public safety, comfort, general welfare. The applicant has not taken into consideration that the site lighting is visible to the ground to the source of the light, which is fifteen-plus feet above grade, that the canopy lighting would affect the visual, visual view of many properties surrounding the site, creating an unwanted and unpermitted light pollution. As the staff is recommending that VA two-five dash zero zero eight be denied as presented, the applicant is proposing to exceed the maximum light levels under the fuel canopy, and that the applicant should further adjust their canopy lighting to be within the maximum twenty-foot candle intensity as permitted.
Questions for staff? So, the reason this variance exists is because of the overlay district, chapter eleven seventy-five, specifically stating in section six around the twenty-foot candles. Is that correct?
So the overlay district has the same standard that our overall parking lot lighting standard has the commercial overlay district. So both the commercial overlay district outside of the CETA boundary and the CETA boundary limit the brightness of parking lot lighting to twenty-foot candles.
Okay. Anything the applicant would like to discuss?
I mean, I, I will simply say that, you know, this is a, obviously a safety concern for Kroger. You know, I'll, I'll read right from, from what, what our fuel center staff, you know, wrote. Dispensing highly flammable liquids in poorly or dimly lit facilities poses a higher risk for our associates and customers. EMS police and our fire, fire partners are also at higher risk for night if their services are needed at our facilities. I mean, they're just very concerned about the light levels being too low. One other thing I do want to note about the Kroger Fuel Center that's maybe different than, say, a Sheets or something like that. Our Kroger Fuel Centers are not twenty-four hours a day. These close at ten o'clock at night, thirty minutes after they close, those lights are dimmed for the evening. So, you know, you're not going to be driving down the street at midnight with a big, bright fuel canopy blasting in your face. Additionally, you know, we are seventy-five foot off that road. We do have that seventy-five-foot landscape buffer off the road. To our south, we do have a, another out parcel that will be developed there as well to further provide screening from this fuel canopy. Obviously, if the granted, if the variance is not approved, you know, we'll comply, but Kroger is respectfully asking for your, your consideration. We've reviewed, Kroger's own internal lighting standards for these fuel canopies, which is generally much higher. Had our engineers look at those lights and gotten them as low as, as the Kroger company is comfortable is, is doing, you know, which is why we're respectfully asking for the variance.
Mr. Moore, how, what's the distance between the closest point of the residential Redwood to the fuel canopy? Like, in terms of feet, do we have that? In turn, you know, thinking of the spillover and the light pollution, did staff look at that with the applicant?
The site plans are not dimensioned that way to show the fuel canopy to the property line, but just looking at this plan here, I'm going to say within a hundred and seventy-five to two-hundred feet, that's about right.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And keep in mind, the light levels at the edge of that canopy are all below the twenty-foot candles as well. It's just, underneath that canopy, it does get, get brighter.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant or comments?
I have one. Why would you put in more lights and dim it thirty percent?
I am not a lighting engineer. I'm going to guess that has to do with the power usage and just trying to get even light levels throughout the canopy versus less lights, brighter lights, it'll create uneven lighting levels underneath that canopy. So my assumption is we're trying to even out that light level under that canopy so it's uniform for all the dispensers. So if you were to dim it thirty-five percent, it might meet everything? I, it very well may, and again, I, I'm not, I'm not a lighting engineer, so I'm, I'm answering as best as I can.
The lights are usually placed in the, in the ceiling or in, in the canopy directly over where the customer is standing.
Correct, they're recessed up in our canopy.
So that light is directly hitting that, that car and the, and the, and the gas pump itself, it's not like it's displaced in some way.
That's correct, it's not pointing out anywhere.
Okay, well, thank you.
Andrew, any idea what, I'm sorry.
That was good, go ahead, you might be asking the same question.
Any idea what the existing Kroger fuel canopy is, candle, foot candle is?
The tender road?
The, the current one, yeah.
The tender, yeah.
The existing Kroger store, I'm not sure. I do not believe they have updated their fuel pumps for their branding design in the ten years I've been here. I do know that whenever the existing fuel centers that got constructed in the fifties and sixties, that did not have to have this regulation for light level, and they've been studied by Sheets and Friendship Kitchen to justify where their variance should be approved, they were anywhere between sixty and a hundred and twenty foot candles at the pavement. All of those fuel centers have since, since updated their signage, their branding, their, their canopy wrapping, and once they are all made aware of the foot candle restriction, they don't touch the lighting on the fuel canopy when they do their update, they leave it, because updating it dramatically lowers what they currently have. So I can say it's something that all the existing facilities have been resistant to hitting, but all the new centers that have come before Planning and Zoning Commission since two thousand and twelve, when this code section has been adopted, have been required to meet the maximum brightness.
Any other questions for the, for staff or the applicant? All right, I'll now load it up for public hearing. Seeing no one run to the podium, I will make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Deeds, seconded by Ms. McDonald, rule call, please. Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Gooden?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Posgrove?
Yes.
Mr. Woldenfeller?
Yes.
And Mr. Deeds, yes. So just a reminder, the staff recommendation is to deny this variance, so we still need a positive recommendation to vote on when we make a motion.
So I'll make a motion that we approve VA twenty-five dash zero zero eight.
Second. All right, motion made by Ms. McDonald, seconded by Mr. Deeds, any further discussion? Rule call. Mr. Donahue?
No.
Ms. Gooden?
No.
Ms. McDonald?
No.
Mr. Posgrove?
No.
Mr. Woldenfeller?
No.
And Mr. Deeds, no.
Sorry. So variance twenty-five dash zero zero eight is not approved.
The final application for the Kroger store is Final Development Plan twenty-five dash zero zero two. This, again, is for the approval of the Kroger Marketplace and Fuel Center located at eighty-one fifty and eighty-two hundred Dally Road respectively. The request this evening is a final development plan for both these two items located on the fourteen-point-two acres of the overall seventeen-point-nine acre site of Green Gate Plaza. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended the preliminary plan approval for Green Gate Plaza in April of two thousand and twenty-five. City Council approved the preliminary development plan via ordinance twenty-five dash zero one five on July seventh. The plans approved by City Council included a predetermined color palette and suitable architectural materials for the entire Green Gate Plaza development, and then also waived the requirements for parking lot setbacks for the thirteen-point-zero-nine acre lot that was predetermined for a grocery-type user at the time. I did want to just make a note, I gave you guys copies of it this evening, that the law director during the city council review noted that select provisions found in the five-point overlay district apply to the Green Gate Plaza site, and that has been reflected in the final development submittal, and also takes into account for the five variances that were requested earlier this evening. Additionally, a second note, in the original zoning approvals in two thousand and one for the property, all final development plans will be reviewed by both Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council. So typically, a final development plan is only approved by Planning and Zoning Commission. In two thousand and one, a city council elected that all final development plans within the three-hundred-acre tract of ground that got zoned at the time have to also go back to the board then for further conformance. So the site plan for the proposed Kroger store, again, is located on a fourteen-point-two acre site. Krogers have elected to combine the fuel outlot and the marketplace store into one parcel for this submittal. During the preliminary plan, it was two separate parcels, if anybody remembered that little detail. The Kroger Marketplace store is situated on the rear of the lot with the majority of the parking in front of the store. When looking at the overall seventeen-point-nine acre site, again, we've been discussing it this evening, it is, has hard boundaries of Dove Parkway to the south, Dally Road to the west, Green Gate Boulevard to the north, and the Redwood Apartment Development to the east. The fourteen-point-two acres that is going to be developed by Krogers is highlighted on the screen, showing that this parcel has access to the private road to the south and then public roads to the north and to the west. The proposed Kroger store, again, has access on three sides of the building with four access drives. When looking at the plans, the internal circulation for the entire Green Gate Plaza will be constructed- will be constructed with this Kroger project. With that being said, none of the outlots will have direct access to either Dally or Green Gate Boulevard. They will share all internal access from this site, and the site plan does show curb cut locations for how these outlots will be provided access in the future. With that, the, the adjoining outlots will be required to have a cross-access agreement with Krogers to gain access from their sites to get access to their property, different property owner. So a cross-access easement will need to be prepared for all the out parcel connectivity. This access easement is nothing that has to come before Planning and Zoning Commission or City Council, it can simply be prepared as part of the civil engineering review, but it memorializes that the parking lot and access drives in and around the Kroger store have been designed to be shared by the entire 17 acres. When looking at the site plan itself, again, Kroger, this evening received a variance from Chapter 1185 to increase the access drives to be 30 foot wide. This site plan Kroger has submitted correctly identifies the Dally and Green Gate intersection as a proposed signalized intersection. However, the plans are not clear on the responsibility for the installation, if it's the property owner or the applicant Kroger, and the timing associated with the traffic signal installation. So staff is recommending the traffic signal be installed prior to any occupancy being issued for the site. With the site plans, Kroger is showing a total of 449 parking stalls on three sides of the building. The parking lot does incorporate the overlay standards for parking lot landscaping and islands with no more than 12 single stalls in a row. Pedestrian access is gained to Kroger with a sidewalk at the front of the store connecting Green Gate Boulevard to Dove Parkway. There is an eight-foot multi-use path that currently exists along Dally Road. The applicant, however, is not showing a sidewalk connection on their parcel along Green Gate Boulevard. That's this section highlighted in this box up in the, this corner. The applicant will need to add a concrete sidewalk in this section that is along their, their frontage of Green Gate Boulevard. With the utility plan, the applicant is showing sanitary sewer is available along the northwest corner of the site. The plans propose extending this public sewer main throughout the property to not only serve Kroger in its fuel center, but also the adjacent outlots. Water service will be provided to Kroger by an existing water main to the north side of Green Gate Boulevard. Water service for the fuel center will go, come from the west side of Dally Road. A private fire line is proposed to wrap the entire exterior of the proposed marketplace. That private fire line is just not noted in my site layout here, line work kind of got a little busy. Stormwater is being proposed to be handled with a regional detention basin in the southeast corner of this development. This detention basin will be constructed by Kroger and will be sized for the entire 17 acres of outlawed growth, not just Kroger. And this outlaw, this pond is also designed to handle a little bit of drainage to the north of Green Gate Boulevard and all Green Gate Boulevard's drainage as well for the roadway the city's constructing. One question, one of the Planning and Zoning Commission members asked me prior to this meeting was the plans for the apartment project and commercial development to the north showed a pond where this outlaw is positioned on this plan. After Kroger's civil engineer had reviewed that pond's placement, it actually conflicted with the tributary boundaries for natural stormwater runoff, so that north side of Green Gate Boulevard does not naturally drain to this area, so a pond cannot be located there for that development. So whenever the site to the north of Green Gate Boulevard gets developed, they will have to come up with their own stormwater management plan as their tributary actually sheds to the west of Dally Road to Hal Pond. So that's essentially an engineering oversight when the property to the north got zoned, but does not affect the functionality of this site, and this configuration does not affect the functionality of the other side of Green Gate Boulevard. When looking at the landscape plan, the applicant has provided a tree removable survey. They have noted with the survey that due to grades and then some of the existing vegetation that's, that's floating in the middle of the site, that they need to remove a total of 13 trees that require replacement. The 2001 zoning that approved this property requires any tree that gets removed that's pre-existing on the site be required to be replaced with a minimum of a three-inch DBH tree. When looking at the applicant's landscape plan, they have noted here the correct number of trees for the building and the correct number of trees for the parking lot, requiring a total of 198 trees at a minimum of 1.75 inches DBH at planting. This calculation is in addition to the 13 trees at three inches that are required. Staff has reviewed the landscape plan and has noted that the 13 trees at three inches DBH has not been provided in the plant schedule. The landscape plan in total, with the landscape screening along the back here to the apartments, is showing a total of 383 trees to be planted, which is exceeding the minimum requirements. However, the evergreen trees that are shown to screen to the east here are shown at four foot in height for the majority of them. The minimum tree planting size in the 2001 code is a five foot height, so staff is recommending that the applicant update the legend here accordingly. Planning at taller heights may even result in slightly, slight reduction in the number of trees to provide the same screening. The applicant's plan here also shows the mounding requirements and setting five-foot landscape buffer along Dally Road. It's really hard to see on this plan sheet here, but the early concepts for this landscape plan had these three rings to show grading for the mounding located to the far east of this landscape buffer. The landscape plan was updated to provide these larger rings for mounding to have the mounding encompass a wider area. So there's a confliction in here on which line work is actually most up-to-date and accurate. In addition, this landscape plan is showing the sanitary being more in favor of the Dally Road side of that 75-foot buffer. When looking at the utility plan, the sanitary is in the back third of the landscape buffer closest to the building, so there's a sanitary sewer confliction issue as well with landscape plan. So staff is recommending that that sanitary sewer and landscape mounding details be further clarified and corrected for City Council's review next Monday. When looking at the lighting plan, the applicant is showing a total of 38 parking lot lights throughout the site. The parking lot light fixture detail will be a 27-foot pole on a two-and-a-half-foot concrete riser for an overall height of 29.5 feet, which is in the maximum 30-foot height that's permitted. The light poles will be LED in a bronze finish. The photometric plan does not show any spillover on adjacent residential properties to the east or south. The applicant will have to update the photometric plan underneath the fuel canopy based off of that variance determination this evening by the Planning and Zoning Commission. With the applicant's submittal, they are showing a detail here for outdoor storage that Krogers is recommending for seasonal display for items for sale. This is not outdoor storage for product holding, but for a product that could be actively purchased, so a slight clarification there on that. On the front of the store here to both sides of the main entry, the applicant is requesting two 650 square foot outdoor sales areas. These outdoor sales areas are noted by the applicant to include seasonal flowers, plants, firewood, and patio furniture. And then around the fuel canopy kiosk, the applicant is requesting one 528 square foot designated area for beverages, ice, propane, snacks, other type of vending services. This plan here is showing a hatched area for the allowable area to have limits for outdoor sales. However, this is not committing to any physically defined area on the, on the site to delineate these boundaries. So staff is recommending that the outdoor sales area for both sites be physically delineated on the sidewalk and pavement to ensure the approved locations are not expanded over time. And that could be done with parking lot striping, different concrete treatment, just a physical delineation to set the boundary for these two zones. When looking at the architecture for the proposed facility, ordinance 25-015 that was approved by City Council set additional building design commitments for the entire 17.9 acres, including the Kroger site and its fuel center. Buildings larger than 30,000 square feet are permitted to use a half-height architectural CMU block, which is a four-by-16 inch in size. Any buildings 30,000 square feet or smaller must coordinate using an earth-toned traditional clay brick. Additional color palette, digital color palette was submitted and approved by City Council to provide primary masonry colors, accent masonry colors, and accent metal and epist colors for the entire 17 acre site. When looking at the proposed Kroger store, the marketplace is meeting all of the building materials and colors that were approved with that ordinance. The Via Point Overlay District also requires four-sided architecture with a minimum of three design elements on the front elevation and two design elements on the side and rear elevation. This building design is meeting that, as well as requiring more than, is requiring offset wall plane for every 50 feet or more to inhibit large expanses of blank walls. Again, the, the updated plans that the applicant presented to City Council are meeting that standard. When looking at the fuel canopy, this building is larger, is smaller than 30,000 square feet at 5,418 square feet. This fuel center is required to use a traditional clay brick. The applicant has noted in here the brick material Cherokee flash. Samples of all building materials are over on Mr. Donahue, if you guys haven't had a chance to look at them. The clay brick for the fuel center does not match the primary masonry colors approved with ordinance 25-015, it needs to be modified accordingly. When looking at the signage for the facility, staff has talked a lot about the signage for the store this evening, so we'll, we'll talk about the one sign that has not been discussed yet. The Starbucks sign, which is located on the front of the building, is a 25-square-foot round cabinet box sign. Cabinet box signs are prohibited by Chapter 1175.02 E3F in the Overlay District. The cabinet box sign is a function of a acrylic panel that has eternal illumination where the entire cabinet has illumination through the face. To remove the cabinet box function of the sign, staff has recommended the two basic paths to doing so. One, removing the internal illumination, it can just be a acrylic round button face. If the illumination is to be present, that is internal, then the sign needs to have routed push-through acrylic to create individual illumination components that are offset from an opaque background to give dimensionality to the sign. For the fuel center signage, that was also discussed this evening, so I'm not going to go over that in any more detail unless the commission has questions. When looking at miscellaneous components to the site, the applicant has provided this detail sheet here showing what a, the grocery pickup signage will look like. It'll be on a per-stall basis on that north side of the building. Details here for the air station and propane lockers. The applicant's plan is showing landscape mounding within that area to block those elements from Dally Road. And then finally here, one of the commission members asked for details on the cart corrals. The applicant has provided this detail here. Staff has noted that this large hoop at the top creates a very obvious place for signage, which is shown in this miscellaneous detail. Signage in this area is not permitted as a permitted signage type, so staff is recommending that this area be completely removed from the cart corral. Similar vein to the outdoor storage to prohibit a sign going up in this facility when Krogers does a brand update or a remodel, things like that, that way something just doesn't appear out of nowhere and it has to become an enforcement action. So with the final development plan, staff has the following 10 recommendations for approval. The first is a cross-access easement is required for all out parcels connect, that have connectivity onto the Kroger site. The traffic signal at Dally and Green Gate Boulevard be installed prior to any building occupancy on the Kroger site. That a five-foot concrete sidewalk be added along Green Gate Boulevard on the applicant's property. The applicant clarifies both sanitary sewer alignment and final mounding with the landscape detail along Dally Road prior to City Council approval. That the 13, minimum of 13 trees shall be planted at the three-inch DBH. That all evergreen trees shall be planted at a minimum five-foot height. That the brick for the fuel center match one of the primary colors indicated on the color palette approved with ORD 25-015. That the outdoor sales areas be physically delineated on the sidewalk and pavement. That the Starbucks sign shall either be non-illuminated or dimensional sign pushed through acrylic on an opaque face. And that these signage areas from the cart corrals be removed from their overall design to prohibit future signage from being installed in those areas. That was a lot, if there's any questions, I'd be glad to go over it to you guys.
Questions or comments for staff?
I do. A couple of questions, just clarification. Because Dove Parkway is a private road, what, who owns that road?
So Dove Parkway is owned by Redwood, the apartment community.
Okay.
When the plans for Dove Parkway were proposed back in 2013 as part of the ordinance for that phase one of the apartment complex, City Council had set aside this entry easement area. It's kind of hard to see on this plan, but there's a dashed line that runs and stops just about here. That access easement is just before their first access drive into the community, so if I go back to aerial, is, stops right about here. That access easement was to allow for an access point on this, at the time, 35-acre property. Now Dove Parkway was designed and is a concrete roadway. That road was designed to handle the additional traffic with the 35-acre development.
Okay, thank you. Under the fuel canopy, is there a requirement that there's any kind of a hazmat collection system be installed under that?
So locally, we do not have any requirements for that.
Okay.
But if there's anything that's required, is it Buster? If they have, there's any requirements there at the federal level, that is something that we do not get involved with.
And then you mentioned that the traffic signal would be going in. I think I remember a discussion with a housing developer that they were going to have to pay part of that, is that correct?
So the traffic signal is a function of the development activity for this area.
Okay.
So given the existing single-family neighborhood, that will be the extension off of this, and the traffic study that was done for them and for Redwood when they went in, a traffic study's not warranted at this intersection. It's only when one of the large commercial developments gets developed, creates the, the need for that signal.
Okay.
So if the apartments were, have to have developed- So if the apartments were, have to have developed by now, they would have been responsible for installing that signal. Since that project has not had any momentum moving forward, this project creates the trigger for that signal installation.
Okay. And then my last question is, have you notified the apartment developer that they're going to have to re-submit a new plan to accommodate their detention plan?
So the property owner that owns the entire 35 acres is the owner that is selling this site to Kroger. They are aware of the detention changes.
Okay.
They have been providing preliminary designs for how to accommodate that detention change. A final design has not been provided yet, but one of the concepts is to provide ponds along the frontage of Dally Road in front of the commercial out parcels to, to collect in that direction, because that's the direction the tributary goes.
Okay.
They're running into a couple of issues with just their development text commitments for setbacks. It's something that engineering can work out, whether it turns into underground detention or, you know, some other type of detention rather than surface. But they are, they are more than aware of it and have been modifying their designs for the northern half of the site accordingly.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Any other questions for staff?
Is it a detention pond or retention pond?
On this site, this will be a wet basin on this site.
Good. Well, the fountain?
The applicant can answer that question.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? I guess my first question for you would be, and you've addressed the Starbucks condition number nine. So the other 10, the other, so 10 conditions, are you, are you good with those?
Yes, we, we agree to the 10 conditions. I mean, just in general, I'm actually in, working with the seller right now on design of the traffic signal. So B3 is handling that as well. The five-feet sidewalks, obviously no issue. I've already flipped the sanitary sewer back and adjusted the mound, so that'll be, I'll get you a new plan before Monday night's council meeting on that. The 13 trees is no problem. I don't have a problem with the evergreens. The brick will adjust. My architect is actually here, if you want to talk about brick colors more, but I think we can, we can adjust those to better match the, the building materials. I don't have any problem. And we've already submitted a new Starbucks sign to Andrew with the push-through acrylic lettering, so hopefully that, that's resolved there as well. So no real concerns. The cart corral, if I could find one that didn't have the banner on it, I would have submitted that, but couldn't find a picture of one, so we'll certainly remove those. No problem there. I'm trying to think, a couple of things that just were mentioned. There was something else I was going to mention.
Pond, the fountain.
The pond, the pond will be a wet pond. We're not intending on putting a fountain in it right now. That really just becomes a maintenance issue. You know, so if it's not required, it's something we prefer not to do. But, you know, it will be landscaped around it. Kroger does maintain them. You know, we designed that as, as a wet pond. It handles stormwater management as well as water quality. So, you know, it should, you know, it's our intention to make it continue to look nice. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. I do want to say that I do appreciate Mr. Moore's guidance and help on this project. He's been very responsive, very helpful, especially with the different zoning codes and some of the intricacies of this one, so I want to thank him for that.
Any questions for you?
I think the only thing at the existing site is, and this may be an Andrew thing as well, the, some of the landscaping, like the, the shrubs have grown into the parking spots. And I just think we ought to be careful as we look forward to, to try to not cause a problem that's going to cause customer dissatisfaction. So I tried to flip through here and I did notice that some of those were delineated. I, I did have a hard time telling you exactly where. So I don't know if the islands are mostly trees or if there are plantings in them, but I agree, I think Kroger does a good job keeping up trim, but they just run to the size you're trimming of, they're still into the first.
It's typically just mulch with, with the required trees are planted in those, in those areas. We don't really want a lot of undergrowth. That just gets destroyed.
It does.
With snow and everything else, so.
Right.
We typically will just mulch those, the trees that are required.
The landscape plan, Mr. Deeds on sheet L 3.2, provides a landscape bed detail, provides a landscape bed detail. That detail does note there is a mix of, Carl Forrester reed grass that is in between the two trees, that is centered by a mix of junipers and some cat mints, some, so lots of flowery and feathery material that, that doesn't have a lot of spread will be, will be planted. And those island details are mainly centered, it says here, with the front aisle planting. So the very front aisle will have some of those extra elements. The islands further back look like they're broken up with trees on either end, and then they will have the feathered reed grass between as well to kind of create some, some breakdowns, to break up the site. The 2001 zoning code has a lot of very specific requirements for parking lot landscaping, and so does the overlay district, so that's what the applicant has submitted for.
Any other questions or comments for the applicant?
Thank you, sir.
All right, so no public carry on this final development plans, we'll need a motion.
One quick question for Andrew. On, on Dove, will there be a left-hand turn lane?
There is not presently shown a left-hand turn lane.
I didn't think so.
On Dove Parkway?
Yeah, on Dove, yeah, Dove, if you're turning left, what, in between the, in between the fuel station and then, yes, the south entrance, I believe?
So you're talking about at this light?
No, 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 keep on going up.
You want a left-hand turn into our site?
Is there a left-hand turn lane here?
Oh, sorry. No, there will not be a left-hand turn. It'll be the same, just two lanes leading into that site.
Okay. Is that, it's been a while since I've been on it, like you forgot it, but is it striped as it is? I mean, it's a private road. I'm just, I'm just sensing, again, trying to hit off something that might cause challenges.
Give me just one second here, I have actually.
But that's something you can bring, I mean, it's not their street anyway, so.
It is, it is not striped. It is, it is only striped when you get up to the stop bar.
That's why, okay, I didn't recall.
The striping stops one car length back on Dove. It is not striped throughout.
Great. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve final development plan FDP-25-003.
002.
Oh. What's his, I'm sorry, 002, because I'm reading ahead.
And with the 10 staff recommendations noted.
Yes.
Would that be correct?
Yes, with all 10 of the staff recommendations noted in, in the presentation.
All right, I'll second that. So motion made by Mr. Deeds, second by the chair. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Gooden?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Pousgrove?
Yes.
Mr. Wildeddollar?
Yes.
And Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
So FDP 25-002 is approved, and I would note that that's a recommendation to city council
The last application on tonight's agenda is final development plan 25-003. This application is for the final development plan for Lockpoint Village, the multi-family project located on the east side of Hill Road, consisting of 120 apartment dwelling units. This preliminary plan went to, was approved by Planning and Zoning Commission on June 16th, excuse me, was approved by city council on June 16th via ordinance 25-011. The plans approved by city council set a maximum density of 120 apartment units, consisting of a mix of two-unit and four-unit buildings. The building designs were further committed to have a minimum front porch dimension for both single-story buildings and two-story buildings, along with other exterior finish, material placements, colors, and deviations. When looking at the final development plan, the general layout of the, the site is substantially similar to the preliminary plans that Planning and Zoning Commission had reviewed. A lot of the details for what council have adjusted, and the ordinance really deals with the unit makeup and unit design. I'll cover that here this evening. When looking at the existing site plan here, the applicant has provided a survey showing the topo and natural landscape buffers that are existing on the northeast and south sides. The applicant has put together the utility package here showing how they're going to get utilities into the site. Water will be extended off of an existing 12-inch water main located on Green Gate Boulevard. This water line through development will need to be private after being split off in a meter room. The applicant has not shown details for the meeting room location on the site plan. However, staff has discussed the meter room with the applicant and our utility department, so staff is comfortable with recommending that the meter room details be finalized during the civil engineering review. Typically, the meter room goes inside the clubhouse or some other heated building space, so it should be minimal impact to, to get that done, given the proximity of where it's entering the site and how the site's laid out. The green line on the screen shows the site has existing sanitary that is extended on the south side, east side of Hill Road, extending into the site. A sanitary will be spread throughout the property to serve all the additional units. The sanitary will be a public line. We like for all of our sanitary lines to be public. That way we can watch it for I and I to, to keep a good track on our treatment plan. The storm sewer for the property, I threw a couple of lines on here showing will lead to a wet basin in the southwest corner. That basin will outlet to the natural tributary on the opposite side of Hill Road. When looking at the access and traffic pattern for the site, the plans are showing two access drives onto Hill Road. The center access drive will line up with Green Gate Boulevard on the opposite side of the road. Fairfield County and Canal Winchester reviewed the traffic study with the preliminary development plan and had noted that a left turn lane into the site is recommended, given that Green Gate has a left turn lane leading into their site, to not have opposing turn movements to line those up was a safety consideration. The applicant is providing that on the screen, and has also noted the additional pavement widening that will need to take place with the installation of that turn lane. The site features private streets at 26 feet wide. The streets are noted to be asphalt with no parking on the road. The applicant has provided an additional 53 off-street parking stalls throughout the site to meet their minimum commitments of 50 in their preliminary development text. The site will also feature two-car garages for each unit with a minimum 25-foot-long driveway to park two vehicles. For pedestrian connectivity, the applicant is showing five sidewalk connections to Hill Road, connecting to a five-foot sidewalk they will be constructing along the entire frontage of Hill Road, as well as providing sidewalk on one side of the development internal to the site, as well as providing sidewalk pathway connections in the large green space center of the site and around the wet detention basin. In terms of landscaping, the applicant notes that 373 trees are needed for the building coverage, nine trees are needed for the parking coverage, and the tree survey shows that four trees are to be removed from the site that require four trees to be planted. For a grand total of 382 trees, the applicant's landscape plan is showing the 382 trees to be planted onsite to meet the landscape standards. The overlay district also requires one tree for every 30 feet to be planted along the frontage of Hill Road. Out of that 382 trees, the applicant is showing the landscape buffer requirements along Hill Road are being met. The applicant has also provided landscape plan details for their parking lot around the clubhouse and landscaping around the clubhouse itself. When reviewing the landscape plan, staff had noted that the pickleball courts need to have an acoustic barrier installed on the west side that face the residential homes on Green Gate Boulevard. The number of complaints the city gets on the pickleball courts at Migo Park is never-ending. So in order to curb that type of issue with a private pickleball court facility, staff is recommending that the applicant install that acoustic sound barrier from the beginning. An additional, those acoustic sound barriers are not very attractive looking, so that an R-Riviti screen should be further provided to help break up that, that, that matting from the adjacent residential homes to the west. The applicant has also provided the landscape package for each apartment unit. They have noted here all the plant types that will be planted per unit design. One of the conditions for the preliminary plan approval was HVAC screening be provided, as the applicant is showing the HVAC screening will be provided for all the residential units. The lighting plan has been provided for review, showing the proposed 16-foot-tall parking lot lights throughout the site. The original preliminary development plan noted parking lot lighting would be no taller than 12-foot tall. After looking through different lighting packages and the city's recommended lighting standards, the applicant is requesting a minor modification to the development text to increase that to 16-foot height. The photometric plan on the right shows at a 16-foot height how that lighting would, would illuminate the site. Additional details for the residential unit wall lights, the, the entry, front and rear entry have been provided. In the development plan text, there are commitments for fencing, for dumpster screening, also around the pool, the pickleball court, and the dog park. On the left-hand side here, you can see the wood screen that will be around the dumpster gates, the dumpster enclosure, including gates. The pool and dog park will have an aluminum fence design. And then each unit will have a vinyl fence that will separate their patio area if it is a patio projecting out of the unit from the adjacent unit. The applicant is requesting a minor modification to the development text in the fencing section to allow for an eight-foot chain link fence around the pickleball court. They admitted that during the design, they did not anticipate the pickleball court having an aluminum fence, and that a chain link style was more conducive to the size of the, the pickleballs that are being used to prevent them from escaping. So this is the fence design that they've requested. This is the fence design staff was recommending, the acoustic barrier be applied on that, that west side. When going through the unit designs, some minor changes from when planning and zoning had reviewed at last. City council had eliminated all the six-unit building types from the approval, so the maximum number of units in a single building is four. The unit design is still the same between two and three-bedroom units. So you have a two-unit design at the top, that's all single-story. A four-unit design in the middle, that's all single-story. And then there is a four-unit design that has a vertical two-story townhome component for the center two units. So this is the unit breakdown that city council had approved for the development. Additional changes that council has taken place, just worth mentioning, is in addition to the masonry wainscot at the bottom of the front elevation, every other garage door will have full masonry height around the garage door unit itself to visually break itself apart from its neighboring unit. itself apart from its neighboring unit, and any two-story building will incorporate a board and batten siding for the taller two-story component, and that either sides will be a horizontal siding for a complimentary scale and also a vertical deviation of the heights. The architectural elements to differentiate each building got reduced with the council changes to these two, so you have a gable vent and a gable pediment. The breakdown of these units has been provided in the submittal. It's just worth mentioning what that term means visually for the unit design. When looking at a typical two-unit building, the front of the building here, this plan sheet notes all the architectural elements. Some worth mentioning beyond the brick that I already discussed is the garage doors will be, every garage door throughout the complex will feature glass in the top pane. All the windows are sized with shutters to be appropriate, and then on the rear of the building, based off of planning zoning comments and city council comments, the applicant has added some gable ends to the rear side of the building to break up the roof line. City council had a review to the applicant, different roof pitches, ultimately determined that 412 roof pitch was the most appropriate, given the length of the buildings, going to a 5 or 612 roof pitch increased the amount of roof you saw, so determined that these little changes were more impactful than having a roof pitch that was steeper. When looking at the front, excuse me, when looking at the rear of the two-unit building designs, again, this is the kind of breakdown for the different typologies. This top example would face internal to the site with gables centered above the doorways. This bottom example would be an elevation that faces Hill Road. Hill Road is required to have additional site elements, so the applicant has committed to these decorative columns, this patio railing, as well as carrying that brick wainscot throughout the back. So certain units that are listed in my staff report facing Hill Road will have these additional design elements. I did not go through the effort of showing each one of those on the screen, but this kind of gives you an example of how internal to the site and external facing to the site. When looking at the two-story building designs, there's really two main unit designs. This is a two-bedroom unit, this is a three-bedroom unit. With the three-bedroom unit, you have more living space in the upstairs, which changes your roof pitches and articulation to that. And then when looking at the rear of the buildings here, depending if you have, this is a building that faces internal to the development, showing there are fencing that will kind of create a little patio area visually here, here, and here, and then this is a unit design that has a different patio configuration with patios that are recessed under the building as well as patios that project out. Again, this is a two-unit building, this is a three-unit building, so it kind of shows how the roof line changes. The applicant has provided final signage details for consideration. The main entry sign is larger sign and design, five-foot tall, seven-and-a-half foot wide. This sign will be externally illuminated on a stone base. The second sign for the secondary entry is smaller, five-foot tall, four-and-a-half, 4.3 feet wide, same stone base and external illumination. Staff is recommending final development plan 25 dash 003 be approved with the following two conditions. One, a water meter room be located on the site, a location and design be evaluated during civil engineering review, and that the applicant installs an acoustic sound barrier and arborvitae on the west side of the pickleball courts to screen the pickleball from the residential homes on the opposite side of Hill Road.
So Mr. Moore, I know the development text was changed many times on this over the last several months, and I didn't see it. So do we still have the requirement that the garage doors consist of glass panels on every garage door?
Yeah, so, sorry, I quickly covered that. This note here shows that each garage door, including the maintenance building, will have glass in the top panel across the whole site.
And then any exposed foundation will be a stone material, right?
So the applicant has noted that the amount of foundation exposure will be minimal. When looking at the development text here, I believe there is a commitment for foundation over a certain height that will be covered. Give me a second to find it.
I think it's...
Exposed foundation material shall be stone, yes.
Yeah, it doesn't give a height or...
Yeah, so the way the development text is written would be on any side of the building with exposed foundations.
Okay, and they're, okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Comments?
The applicant does have a presentation tonight. If you guys want to wait to ask him any specific questions after, in case he answers anything you guys may have. Jason, if you want to grab this, I'll hold it for you.
He did a lot better presentation than I think I would have, so this will be a lot of reiteration kind of what he said already. Like Andrew mentioned, we removed the sixplex buildings based off city council feedback. So there will be just duplex and fourplex, maybe 37 buildings total. And then the, also based off of feedback, we increased the number of two-bedroom units and decreased the number of three-bedroom units. Also based on some of their feedback, we took, we kind of minimized the colors that we had, and we kind of went with a more neutral color palette, so here you can kind of see the colors. I have some colored elevations to share as well. Cape Cod gray, Tuscan clay, and coastal stage. I believe we have a sample of the Tuscan clay over there if you're interested in seeing that. So here, again, just a sample of the proposed elevations, these are the two-story ones. You can see the alternating stone between garages, you can see the glass, the glass windows, the horizontal board and batten mixed with the horizontal siding. Just a different color, slightly different building. As Andrew mentioned, the buildings that have protruding patios will have the privacy screening, so I kind of just put in a little picture up there in the top right. There'll be a six-foot tall white vinyl fencing. Seventy-eight percent of the buildings will have some form of screening, so a good portion of them. As Andrew mentioned, different fencing. Regarding the sports court, like Andrew mentioned, that was an oversight on our part. We realized that aluminum fencing will not work for pickleball court, the ball will go right through it, so needed to make that change to black vinyl coated fencing. The pool and dog park will have the black aluminum fencing, which you can see in that picture there, and then the clubhouse will have one-by-six boards, blue boards. Then for the eventy plan, Andrew touched on it briefly. The clubhouse will have a kitchen at fitness center, pool table, kind of a community room. The pool deck will have cabanas, shaded seating, lounge chairs, grill, entertaining area, and fire pits. And then some colored elevations of the monument signs. The stone sample is also over there, if you're interested in that, will match what the buildings have as well. And then the site signage, based off your feedback, I believe, and city council feedback, there will be no parking signs. That's an example of the sign there. These are private roads, so we've decided to go with the speed limit of 15 miles per hour, and then there will be space throughout the site. And then based off staff recommendations, we will comply with both of them, the first one being the water meter room. We'll need to slightly modify our water plan, but they will be, it will be on the side of the clubhouse, kind of where I've drawn it there. That will be determined, I guess the size will be determined during final engineering. And then also, we will install a acoustic sound barrier. It may look like that. Final materials haven't been fully decided, but as Andrew mentioned, they're not the prettiest to look at, so we will comply with the arborvitae on the west side of the pickleball court. I did have a question for Andrew, maybe, is there a height recommendation for those arborvitae? Or will it be dependent on the text?
So the chapter 1191 has a minimum five-foot height at planting, so it's something we can look at during the landscape plan review.
Okay. And my only comment would be, and I think, I like the recommendation of installing acoustic sound barrier, but what about the people that live in the community that are exposed? And honestly, I don't think an acoustic sound barrier is going to do much in terms of the way that that travels, that sound travels. So I'd be curious on what staff and the applicant's discussions have been around this. You know, I do get you want to have it kind of fenced off, you know, just to keep the balls and, you know, kind of define that area. But I'm more concerned about if we're putting a sound barrier to the west to border, you know, the homes across Green Gate Boulevard and Hill Road, what about the community itself in terms of the people that live there? And that's, that's exposed. I think probably looking at it from an angle like where this rendering is of the picture, I just don't know, you know, I'm purely just curious if we thought about that from a planning perspective when we made that recommendation.
So from a staff's review, the people that are living in this complex would know about the pickleball court at the time they moved in and could choose to live there accordingly. The people across here in Hill Road, when they bought their homes, did not know a pickleball court was going to be installed across the street. So that is the reason for the recommendation and why it's structured that way. From a usage perspective, maybe that's something Jason can answer on, and how active this court is, the court's going to be private to residents only. I think based off of their site plan, you know, you're going to be walking past the main clubhouse entrance to utilize it, so from my private experience in apartment dwellings, usually the people in front know every single person that lives in the neighborhood and stops people from using amenities that should not be there. But again, that's a question for the applicant. Staff's recommendation was solely based on impacts to residents that did not anticipate this site element.
And will there be restrictions in terms of locked gate or lighting, you know, to discourage, you know, anything after the hours of, I don't know, say 10:00 PM?
Yes, that's correct, yes. So the clubhouse does have restricted hours. Not sure those have been determined yet, but I'm thinking it might be up 10:00 PM for summertime. And just to touch briefly on that pickleball court, in our other communities, the pickleball court is used fairly frequently, and we talked about this, we actually have not had any complaints on sound, but if there were complaints on sound, I don't think we would have any issue with doing the, I guess, sound barrier, you know, a 360 sound barrier, or at least three sides of it having it. So I don't think, you know, we're not opposed to that if there are complaints, but at a minimum, we will do what staff recommends.
Thank you.
I've actually never been around a pickleball court, I don't know how loud it is. Sounds like you guys get complaints all the time.
They're loud.
Are they? Okay.
They're loud.
Okay.
Very.
It just travels.
It travels further than you would, you'd be surprised.
Have you ever hit like a wiffle ball with a plastic bat with a kid?
Yeah.
Imagine that, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth.
When you go out here tonight, just stand quietly, you'll hear it from our park over here.
McGill Park?
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Comments?
Unfortunately, I'm kind of back to the sidewalk. I just feel like, and I won't make a big difference, I'll just voice my, yes, my opposition to it, because I feel like where the stop signs are, I mean, people are going to be going back across the streets, and it's, I would be annoyed if I, if I were at the pool and I wanted to walk, you know, you have to go across the street to go across the street to get to number 13. So I just, it's really not that much.
I had the same question. It seems really curious to me that the sidewalk beside 13 doesn't extend to the clubhouse.
Yeah.
Oh, next to the clubhouse. You know, that's something we can look at, certainly adding it on that side.
That would make sense.
Yeah. It's almost like instead of having it on this piece, flip it over there, then it's just, I mean, it just connects. So the rest of it's kind of, it's just general annoyance. If I were walking, I have to walk my dog across the street to continue on the sidewalk, I have to walk across the street the other way, so unless you're in the center, unless you're in this one here that has the open space, you're crossing the street in order to do anything.
Although practically, they'll just walk in the middle of the street.
Right, so then they have skinny streets.
And then it's a safety issue, so yeah.
It's a safety issue, yeah. And then, good luck with the stop signs.
Any other questions or comments? All right.
Are we recommending this to council, or is this our final vote?
This is the final decision by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay.
How, so would it be much, so what if just the center loop, you just finished the sidewalk ahead? I know it's an expense and no one likes expense, but it really is just...
The agreement shows it pretty well. Yeah. So like, if you just finish the loop, which I know that sounds like a lot, but that's just that, right? I'm not asking for both sides of the whole place, it just, I just think it'd be...
Well, would you want 13 up to the clubhouse?
Well, I think they just flip that, that would be easier, but that's, that's choice. I want to, so you're walking along, you're walking along in a daze. Oh, if you're walking up, if you happen to be on Hill Dylar, you come here, then you have to flip across the street here to come flip across the street here. So yeah, I would just do that side, and just if you just completed that, it's like, I know it's a little bit of an exp, added expense, but it's not doing dual sidewalks. I mean, go through, most other neighborhoods are on both sides of the street, right? So I would just at least make it.
It seems more important to me to have it extend up to the parking lot, because you've not only got the clubhouse and the pool, you've got the mail there.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's definitely something we can, we will consider. I think the clubhouse area definitely makes sense. And then you're just saying the loop, I guess, to the, I guess, the southeast loop there as well, right?
It's probably more resident satisfaction than me, I probably won't be over there a lot. I know in my neighborhood, if I had to go across the street three or four times as I'm taking my walk simply around my little loop, that would annoy the bechevers out of me, so. Plus, and it's a safety issue because you're having to cross the street, hopefully at a stop sign, and hopefully someone's observing the stop sign.
So is this a recommendation we want to make, Mr. Deeds, or is this an observation for the applicant?
I like recommendation, but it's all of P and Z, it's together with it.
So Mr. Deeds, just to be clear, you're talking about, from a site plan perspective, that the sidewalk internal to, from lot 17 through 36 needs to be a complete loop?
If you did that, and if...
And the sidewalk from 13 to Hill Road needs to be completed.
Right. If you did that, then you could, in a sense, walk the development without having to cross the street, unless you intentionally want to extend your walk or... It's up to the rest of the question.
So would the, would you be okay with that recommendation?
Yes, yeah, we would.
In condition?
Yes.
So sidewalk from lot 17 through 36 to be, to be a complete loop, and then continuation of the sidewalk from lot 13 to Hill Road would be completed?
Correct. And actually, if you, it's up to you whether you want the one on the other side of your entrance, because that serves no purpose at that point.
Yeah, it's related to the parking lot of the clubhouse, more than all the way to Hill Road.
Yeah, it's the other, the one on the other side of that, you just, you come around Hill and you kind of loop, then you stop. So yeah, if you flip it to the other side, it's, it's half your way.
Yeah, no, we will definitely do that.
Can you give me a unit number for that, just for tracking purposes? Is that, the sidewalk you're about flipping the sidewalk from unit 12?
To Hill.
Be on the Hill Road side?
Yeah, flip it over to Hill to the clubhouse.
Let me see, just more and more people walking the street. Okay. So flip the sidewalk from unit 12 to Hill Road.
Right.
Along with still continuing lot 13 to Hill Road to be completed, that'd be on the other side.
Right, right.
Okay.
Okay.
So I think from, you know, I'm always talking about responsible planning and from a common sense approach, that's... sense approach, that seems to make sense for this development in terms of the appropriate navigation and safety.
Well, and particularly because of the, the mail being centralized at that clubhouse location. If you're not going to drive up to get your mail, you're going to walk on that area that no longer has a sidewalk, or doesn't currently have a sidewalk.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
Does ma'am? Oh.
Do you want to make the motion?
Sure, since I started the term, I wrote it down. Great. All right, so we're ready for a motion?
Uh-huh.
All right, I'd like to propose that we approve final development plan FDP-25-003 this time, with the conditions of staff about the water meter room located, location, the installation of acoustic sound barrier on, and arborvitae on the side of the pickleball court, and then extending the sidewalk from lot 17 through 36 in that loop, and from lot 13 to Hill Road. And it's up to the applicant if they wish to remove from unit 12 to Hill Road.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? So motion made by Mr. Deeds, second by Mr. Donahue, roll call.
Mr. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Gooden.
Yes.
Ms. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Posgrove.
Yes.
Mr. Weldon Dollar.
Yes.
And Mr. Deeds, yes.
Okay, so FDP-25-003 has been approved with the two staff recommendations and the P and Z recommendations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In terms of old and new business, Ohio Health opens up...
8:00 a.m. tomorrow.
8:00 a.m. tomorrow. Staff has gone through and done the final site punch list with the project manager out there. Staff has noted that there have been two building design changes that were never approved by Planning and Zoning Commission or staff that will require Ohio Health to come back to the Planning and Zoning Commission to get approval next month. Those two changes involve the omission of a design element on the main entry of the building with three floors of architectural awnings. And then also, the applicant had removed a design element from the building elevations and added an architectural material that was not a part of the approved materials from the Planning and Zoning Commission by changing out stone lentils and a water table band with a buff brick. So both those elements admittedly were not anything staff had been looking for when just driving past the building at 25 miles an hour when we go through town, but at a pedestrian scale, walking the building were quite noticeable. So the applicant's architect is coming in next month to discuss how those changes occurred and to seek approval for them from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
And if we say no?
In terms of other and new business, old and new business, staff is still working through the zoning code update with the consultant firm, OHM and ZoneCo. We have done a, internally with staff, a new recategorization of zoning districts in the city. Some brief highlights to that, we are looking to add a residential zoning district for a rural preserve settlement that people can apply for at the time of plating. That's the current concept behind it. So you don't automatically get it, you have to plat into it and provide the standards at that time. We're looking at creating two industrial districts, changing our two commercial districts a little bit, combining our old town districts to have a mixed-use district and a strictly residential district, creating a parks and open space district, creating an institutional district for our schools and churches that have school elements, as well as removing the ability to apply for a planned district. So that's probably the biggest one, that the zoning code update will remove planned districts from, that's the current concept from happening in the future. So everything will be a straight zoning. You either meet it, you can build it, or you can apply for a variance from a straight zoning, which would have a lot more scrutiny behind it, because it would be for the life of the property, not the life of the plan that has an expiration date. So some big ideas for moving forward, forward with, but this should hopefully help take out some of the political nature behind rezonings. And it's all going to be the Planning and Zoning Commission driven, because you guys are not an elected body. So that is kind of how we're starting out this journey. We'll see where it takes off, but we've provided some input to the consultants on it. We're hoping to have module one out of the four modules to the steering committee here within the next 60 days, I'm hoping. So we'll have another path moving forward. Given staff's level of commitment to this, we've more or less pushed the adoption date from the end of this year to maybe next summer, just to be like completely realistic. But those in the steering committee look forward to an email coming up with the next meeting date and agenda items to go over. In my mind, this beginning stage is the hardest stage, because you're totally rethinking how zoning categories work, and then we're looking to do a map update that rezones the whole city at once. So that component itself needs to be really nailed down. All the additional stuff like landscape standards, lighting standards, you know, signage standards, that's all easy in my mind compared to this first stage. So be patient with me. I'm very thorough. I don't really have much else for old and new business. Culver should be starting construction here, I would assume, for the next 30, 45 days. They are like this close on their full plan approval from a civil engineering perspective. They have submitted their building permits three times now, so they almost have full building permit approval, so they should be rocking and rolling soon. The library, I think, has targeted January 6th or 9th to be their grand opening date. I think they announced that publicly. So things are still moving along.
And, and so Ohio Health is going to come back to essentially ask for a variance to fill a technical box on something we already approved?
This is not a variance. They are asking to change their pre, their...
So they don't want to make the change, they want to go with what they've changed and ask us?
They're asking to modify their approved plans.
Otherwise, they have to rip out the brick and put in, or attach some kind of lentils or whatever to the side.
And do we give them a full occupancy permit?
We are holding off any full occupancy until they get this and the rest of their site punch list corrected. We, whenever a building gets completed from a building inspection standpoint, the city's technical review group goes out and inspects landscaping, site elements, planning and zoning approvals, stormwater, sanitary sewer, domestic water, and we make sure everything is completed to the satisfaction of their approved plans throughout the stages. The building elevations was one element that was noted to not have been installed per the approved plans.
Was it an oversight they didn't think was a big deal, or did they give an explanation?
We can talk to after, if you have any more questions.
So is the new, the plant, new planning, the new zoning code that's going in, I, so like Myers, okay, we'll talk about this afterwards.
All right, no order, new business? Need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Gooden, second by Mr. Deeds, roll call.
By the last machine. Ms. Gooden.
Yes.
Mr. Weldon Dollar.
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Deeds, yes. Mr. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms., sorry, McDonald.
McDonald.
McDonald, thank you.
Yes.
And Mr. Posgrove.
Yes.
Timeout, 9:20 p.m.
It's sad when I know most people there...